So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I will call the meeting to order of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, David Rosacker, Chris Rupert, Jorge Sotolongo, Matt Tondal, Patrick Morris, Vice Chair, and I'm Michael Pate, Chairman. Members of the city, staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fenslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Efferson, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located in the table right up here in front of us. You're certainly welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during the hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When a case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. And after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We will request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has already or previously been said. When we ask that all speakers, we do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all the information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in the white binder in this room. There are no changes to the agenda today, so we're going to start with the consent agenda items that are on for approval. And there's one case on consent for layover. And again, just to remind you, if you want, after I read the consent case that we're going to vote on, if you want that removed from the agenda to talk about it or to discuss it in public, just please raise your hand or stand up, and we'll remove that, and then it'll be heard, okay? So these cases are on consent for approval. The first case is case number three, item number C-1022-269, C-12-22-270. Address is 15, or the applicant is 156 Potter Villas LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is revised preliminary plat approval of the Pine Creek Woods, formerly the Villas at Pine Creek Woods, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4 and R6 along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District for a portion of that of the site. This was laid over from our February 5, 2025, meeting, and the location is southwest of 156th and Potter Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Next is case number nine, KC, item number nine, C-3-25-059. The applicant's Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, is on consent for approval. Request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property, the location of 2807 Charles Street and 1410 North 28th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 10, KC-12-25-046. Applicant is Thompson Dreeson and Dorner, Inc. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of the Spring Valley Industrial Park Replat 11, a minor plat inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384D Lot Frontage. The location is 5825F Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? All right, next is item number 13, KC-10-25-047. Applicant is Swan Developments, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from GC to NBD along with expansion of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Property is a designated local landmark. And the address is northeast of 24th and Miami Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 14, KC-10-25-051. Applicant is Community Health Development Partners, on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from R535 to GI. Location is 3011, 3013, 3015, 3051, 3053, 3057, 3063, and 3065 South 28th Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 15, case number C-9-14-108. Address, or applicant is 3863 Mason Street LLC, on consent for approval. Request is repeal of the PK Parking District, location of 3863 Mason Street and 3863 Marcy Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 16, case number C-10-84-257. Applicant is King's Table LLC. The request is repeal of the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District, and the location is 3819X Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item number 18, case number C-8-25-050. Applicant is Douglas County. Consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the presumed large project special use permit pursuant to Section 55-883Q to allow development over 10 acres in the GO District. The location is southeast of 42nd and Pacific Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item nine, whoops. You want them removed, the Douglas County one? Right, okay. Remove that, and that case will be heard. Next is item number 18, case number C-8-25-056. Applicant is Sell Properties LLC. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow general offices in the HI District, location of 2405Z Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right, next is item 20, KC-14-25-048. Applicant is the Planning Board, on consent for approval. Request is approval of the vacation of a portion of California Street from 15th Street to 16th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Good. And then on item number 12, case number C-10-24-253. Item, or case number C-12-24254. The applicant is Lanahaw Real Estate. It's on consent for layover. This request is revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of the Alcorn Center, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 53-84D. Lot frontage along with rezoning from AG to R6 and MU. Location is east of 204th and Shirley Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right, those are our consent cases. So we have one that's been pulled off. I would need a motion to approve the consent for approval cases.
Approve cases 3, 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, and 20.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we need approval for the one consent for layover case.
Motion to layover, case number 12.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second, Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our consent case. If you're here for those, any of those cases, you're certainly welcome to stay and hear what the meeting's about, or you're free to leave, so thank you for coming. All right, now we'll go back to the consent case that was pulled off the agenda for approval, and that was case number C-8-25-050. Applicant is Douglas County, was on consent for approval. And the request is approval of the major amendment to the presumed large project special use permit pursuant to Section 55-883Q to allow development over 10 acres in the GO District. The location is southeast of 42nd and Pacific Street. Anybody here from the county, the applicant, representative of county? Okay, are there any, are you Doug? Okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's here. But we're working on that.
Name and address, please.
Douglas Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant and the county. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Doug. All right, are there any other proponents? Any opponent, are you a proponent?
I was going to speak in proponent, but there's no opponents then. No need. Not going to take more time.
Any opponents? Sir, did you want to?
Sorry, yeah, it says.
Need to come down? And again, if you'd just please neatly enter your name and address for the record, please.
David Paulson, 4203 Pierce Street.
Okay, thank you.
And it says in my letter here I receive, it's intended to allow applicant to present details of the request for any interested persons to hear and comment on the proposal. I don't think they give much information on what is really being done there. I'd like to find out more, what's going on. What, they tore a building down. They've moved dirt away, they brought dirt back. It's a tight area to start with, and I'm not sure what they tore down, what they plan to build, and how they're going to address things there.
Do you know the area?
Yeah, across the street, they sent this letter to people within 300 feet of the building.
Right.
So.
Eric will give us a summary of what the project's about here in just a bit.
They'll give a summary?
A little bit of a summary, Eric.
Thank you.
Doug, you want to address any of that?
I don't really want to, but I will.
Please.
They're replacing Douglas Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road. They're doing renovation of the building in the northwest corner of the property. Total tear down and redo along with that. There's some parking lot geometry adjustment occurring all around it. I think there's also a new bus stop going in on the northwest corner as well. It's all part of a huge campus down there. That's why we're down here, is because we're changing the plan of that campus. So it's basically taking an old building that's kind of lived its life and replacing it with a brand-new one.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other opponents? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so similar to what was there previously, this will be the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. You know, for the proponent, or the opponent that came up, we can provide the recommendation report. So there should be a phone number, email at the bottom of that notice that you received, we can definitely send that to you. Our recommendation report does provide a summary, but it does provide inpatient and outpatient services. Talks about parking lot reconfiguration. There are a few needs for a couple of waivers, but basically the parking lot is going back in to where it was previously located. So I don't think I need to get into too many of the details, but we can absolutely provide the operating statement, the site plans, and the recommendation report to the individual who spoke. So staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the presumed large project special use permit in the GO District, subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
Right, thank you, Eric. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve a major amendment to presumed large project special use permit in the GO District, subject to the six conditions in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, and next we'll move into the administrative meeting part of the agenda. And there are two items on the administrative part of the agenda. These items will not, there will be no public testimony in these items. There's two items to be discussed here today. The first one is number, case number one, which is case C-12-23-170. The applicant is Keith Edquist. The request is final plat approval of star grass acres, lots 1 through 6, and outlots A through D, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver to Sections 53-99, sidewalks 53-82G, pavement width 53-93, street surfacing to waive installation of curb and gutter, and 53-910 streetscape standards to waive installation of streetlights. This was laid over from our February board meeting. The location is 6820 Northern Hills Drive. Eric?
Yeah, so glad that we're here with the recommendation for approval for the final plat. We've had a couple of layovers, so we've been working with the applicant and their representative. So they have provided all the information that we've needed and required. You know, I don't need to break down. We've discussed this case multiple times, but this is the first phase that has six single-family lots and four outlots. One of the big items was putting the future street connection within an outlot that has been done. There are some Chapter 53 waivers which are being supported related to not providing curb and gutter, a reduction in sidewalk and streetlights, which are all customary for developments in the North Hills Overlay. So, staff recommends approval of a waiver to Sections 5399 sidewalks, subject to coordinating with city staff on acceptable streetlighting plan. Approval of a waiver to 53910 streetscape standards to waive installation of streetlights, subject to coordinating with city staff on acceptable streetlighting plan. Approval of a waiver to 5382G pavement width. Approval of the waiver to 5393 street surfacing to waive installation of curb and gutter. An approval of the final plat, subject to providing accurate maximum building elevations on the final plat milars and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any discussion from the board and comments? If not, then entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the waiver to Sections 5399 sidewalks, subject to coordinating with city staff on an acceptable streetlighting plan. Approval of a waiver to 53910 streetscape standards to waive installation of streetlights, subject to coordinating with city staff on an acceptable streetlighting plan. Approval of a waiver to 5382G pavement width. Approval of a waiver to 5393 street surfacing to waive installation of curb and gutter. An approval of the final plat, subject to providing accurate maximum building elevations on the final plat milars and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding a request to City Council.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. The next meeting on the administrative part of the agenda is number two, KC-12-24-261. The applicant is Sell Properties LLC. The request is final plat approval of El Toro Plaza, a subdivision inside city limits, location of 2405Z Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is compliant and similar to the approved preliminary plat, which was before the Planning Board in November, and then approved by City Council on January 14. It does, the plat does include the improvement of 25th Street between Washington Street and Jefferson Street. Other than that, there's not much to mention. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, any comments from the board? If not, take a motion, please. Motion for the approval of the final plat, subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the public hearing part of the agenda here. The first item on the agenda is item four, KC-8-25-036. The applicant is Reflections Residential Living LLC. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow a large group living in an R435 district. This was laid over from our February 5, 2025, meeting. And the location is 9423 Adams Street. May we hear from the proponents, please, or from the applicant, please? Yep, both come on up, sure. If you're both going to speak, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Julie Harding. The address is 9423 Adams Street.
And I'm Catherine Block, same address, 9324 Adams Street.
Good, thank you.
So Katie is my partner. We have proposed in-home assisted living. The proposed plan, I believe, according to what we've read, the house meets the requirements for this. The challenge that we're having is the parking. We propose to have 12 units, or 12 residents in our home, even with the idea that the residents that will be living there will be memory care. They're not going to be driving. We understand that we still need to come up with the six parking spots for this to meet your requirements. It's my understanding and Katie's understanding, the previous parking plans that we have submitted were not in accordance to what we need. Unfortunately, we did not submit our current parking plan until Tuesday, which we feel when reading through the requirements now meets. So I guess we're here to say, can we work with you to have you look at this parking plan that we have submitted to be able to hopefully have our in-home assisted living?
And for the assisted living to run financially, six people aren't going to cover the cost of what it takes to provide the level of care that we're trying to provide for folks. I currently have a home care company, and I also help with placement on the side. So I help people find places to move to currently. And there is a struggle, there is a shortage of memory care places in Omaha. And Nebraska has, you know, over 40,000 people that have dementia, and that's only going to increase as everybody is aging into this population. And I feel like the, her being a nurse, me running in home care, we have the experience to provide the high quality of care that our community deserves. And especially in that part of town, there's hardly any beds available, any beds there. We did bring a proposal for you guys, showing our new parking space that does put the parking 35 foot from the center. It seems to qualify under the, how much grass versus concrete that you have to have on the property. And we also put together a couple of letters, because I'm currently looking for placement for my mother-in-law, and I'm getting rejection letters everywhere. So there is definitely a need for this. And for us to be able to run it, we have to have at least 10 residents. So if not, three more parking spots, is there a way we can work in two more parking spots? And we could give you guys a couple of options to look at if we could just approach this again.
So. Have you seen the new parking scheme?
Can I grab it for you?
I have not personally, I don't know if my staff has or.
Okay, so we haven't seen that. It would have been beneficial if you had presented that to the Planning Department prior to this meeting, obviously, because.
We got it late last, Tuesday, or yesterday.
So with that said, how do you, how do you get referrals? How do you get your patients? How would you get your patients?
Well, there's several ways. My current business will actually probably feed this a little bit because of the high demand. People can't afford 24-hour home care. Most people cannot afford 24-hour home care. So it gets to a point where they can't afford home care. They have to have another solution to keep their parents safe or their spouse safe. So that's one way. I have several community partners that will refer to us just based off of our current business. Julie's been in this business as well. She had a home care business that did skilled home care for about 17 years. That company is still active, she just sold her portion of it. So we have a lot of contacts in town, we have a lot of referral sources. We'll work with referral companies to get that place full. And I can tell you, just in the three months, that four months that we've had the house, I mean, I could have filled it up already, had it been ready. So it's just, there is a huge need in Omaha. And in that area, there's hardly anything for memory care. Within two miles, there's hardly anything.
So you guys already own the home, then?
We already bought the house.
We bought the house.
We bought the house because of the market, and the house was perfect. So we've already spent the money on the house. And we've already spent the money on all the windows, the easements, the, what's the egress windows?
Egress windows.
We've already spent the investment. And we actually have another, probably $300,000 worth of improvements that we're going to put into the house. And then staffing it and everything like that, I think it's just going to be an added benefit to the community. And that neighborhood itself is an aging community.
Did you, did you check with the Planning Department or any other individuals that might have knowledge of what the requirements are for large group living before you bought the house?
We did. Our contractor is friends with Marty, who I guess used to work with you guys on the board, and he gave us the thumbs up on it.
Who was that?
Marty was his name, I don't know his last name.
He was a city inspector.
Yeah.
We only know him as Marty.
I don't know anything else about him.
That's all I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, no.
Yeah. But he's been, he's given us a lot of the advice on the elevators that we're going to install, and the, you know, just what the city would need to approve it, so.
And one recommendation on that is requirements change, policies change, procedures change.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Working directly with the city is going to be.
It's a tough lesson that we're learning. So, but we just, we're hoping to at least get to 10. If there's any way we can do that, we have a couple of propping things that you guys can look at.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Yes, there are.
Lucas Stone.
Name and address for the record.
Lucas Stone, 3727 North 108th Street.
Uh, three seven two seven North one hundred and eighth Street, speaking as a strong proponent. This sort of stuff is out there doing God's work, taking ca- taking care of their, being their brothers and sisters' keepers. Salute them for that. But have one suggestion and a few extra comments on the detail, the nerdy details. Suggestion is to bump bedrooms pretty out slightly into the second floor of the foyer, and then extend the lift in the main house up to the second floor, which lets you get rid of a lift. That avoids some issues with neck six twenty dot sixty-two, which is elevator selective coordination, also simplifies elevator recall, since as far as I can tell, we're on twenty thirteen elevator code, which does apply recall, phase one recall to even rula, si- small sized elevators. A few comments otherwise, just don't get, uh, for the, for the developers, don't get caught out by fire alarm. There's a few different reasons why it would be needed. There's too many bedrooms for ordinary smoke alarms to work, because you run over the twelve smoke alarm limit. You need the recall supervision and a few other things, sprinklers, sprinklers, uh, that's another one, sprinkler retrofit. It's gonna be a thing since this is R four under IBC. Could be thirteen D, could be thirteen R, probably a wire service upsize. And on that note, also, conditioned addicts are a good idea on sprinkler buildings, just saying. Got two other good ideas, fire alarms, not only fire and carbon monoxide, which are required, but this is gas appliances in it, which it probably does, gas detection. And you might want to look at UL three hundred A for the kitchen hood. UL three hundred A is like a small mini hood system.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other proponents? I see none. Are there any opponents?
Can I say something else?
Okay, I'll, I'll call you back up. Right, and again, you'll only have to enter your name and address for the, for the record, please.
Catherine Block. The address of the building is ninety-four twenty-three Adams Street. And just to comment on the elevators, the reason there's two is because of the fourteen feet for residential elevators. You can only go up so many feet, so we have to have two, so one can go down to the basement, and then one can go up to the second floor. That way, all floors are elevator wheelchair accessible, so that was the reason we have two elevators.
About fourteen.
Okay, thank, no, sir, keep your comments to the public.
And then I have this if you, if you want it.
You can give it to Eric.
I'll, I'll talk to her offline and.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item. Eric.
Yeah, so obviously, the staff recommendation report is for denial. Their concern's just being able to provide a parking, a compliant plan. You know, obviously, I was just handed this proposal. You know, staff would be fine with changing our recommendation to a layover to continue to work and, and coordinate with the applicant, so, so we'd be fine with that. You know, I just wanna reiterate, we're not going to be supportive of any parking waivers. One of the challenges with this specific use type of large group living is that you're not allowed to, to have parking stalls within the front yard setback, and so off of Drexel Street from the property line thirty-five feet back, or to where the building, or the house sits, I don't know what that dimension is. You're not allowed to have parking stalls that count towards that, so as we stand right now, we have three compliant parking stalls with the garage, so. You know, but we're willing to sit down and have a conversation. You know, part of our concern is that with the extensive renovations and adding five bedrooms to the existing five bedrooms, the applicant is creating this issue of the parking, so really where we sit is that the building and site is probably better for a small group living disabled facility, which was between four and eight individuals living with a handicap. Of course, we, you know, this use, you know, there's a need for this, we acknowledge that, and, and we are usually supportive, but you know, when you're creating this, this parking requirement and, you know, it doesn't seem like there's a, a readily easy, easy fix. So I guess I'll leave it at that, and, you know, if, if the board is comfortable, we're comfortable with a layover.
Okay, obviously, you haven't had a chance to, to digest what we just handed to you today, so I'm not gonna ask you to comment on that, because it's, it's early yet on it. Any comments from the board at all?
I have more comments.
Now, we're, I close the public hearing. Okay, no comments, and entertain a motion?
Motion to layover.
Okay, I have a motion for layover in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker? Tondle? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just before I, I vote, obviously, parking's the biggest issue, and if there are not material changes that's gonna satisfy the planning department, I, 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 I think the only other option is going to go to convert this to a small group living if you wanna continue to do that, so. Those are the conversations, I think, that need to take place, if you wanna do that. I'll vote yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item five, which is case number C eight dash twenty dash one eighty-eight. C eight dash twenty dash one ninety-one. The applicant is Karen Buddhist Society of Omaha. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow religious assembly in the DR District, and approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED, North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. This was laid over from our August seventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting, and the location is ninety-eight sixty-one North Sixtieth Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon again, Douglas Streason, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicants. They are here in the audience. Endo in the front is kind of the leader of the group, and the other ones, I don't know that they speak, but we've seen some of those before. We had a neighborhood meeting last week with some of the neighbors and identified certain issues. In going through that, we, we met with four neighbors and up until that meeting, I don't know that they really knew each other, so that the complaints weren't necessarily being received between the two. So now they've all got each other's information, so they can talk directly, and hopefully solve problems before our, uh, public officials have to go out and try to solve them. There seems to be some traffic issues on Sixtieth Street related to speeding and a dangerous intersection there. These guys have, um, up to like six events a year where they have a lot of people come and, and go through their Buddhist ceremonies. They beat on drums, they, they make a lot of noise. I don't know that the noise per se is the issue, it's when the noise occurs. That's the issue. The long-term goal for this is to move those ceremonies inside to dampen the noise to the neighbors. But I think with the improved contact between them, my client is committed to making sure that the noise stops when somebody complains. There's a lot of issues with the traffic. Some of that's brought up in the rec report. They've got a large property. Unfortunately, it's in the, I don't know, I shouldn't say unfortunately, it's in the environmental district, which doesn't encourage a lot of impervious coverage, a lot of grading, those kind of things. What I got out of the neighborhood meeting is when they have these big events, it creates a big traffic snarl at their driveway. Our site plan has forty-six parking stalls on site. In these larger events, those won't be sufficient. So we've lined up some off-site parking within a couple of miles of here at a facility that isn't typically used on the weekends. We gotta work some details out with them, but we'll have a place for the after forty-six stall arrivers to go park their car and be shuttled back to the site.
Doug, why don't you just put more parking on site? You've got, you've got land.
Well, some of it is because of the environmental district area, a lot of grading, there's grading restrictions. Generally, you wanna keep your impervious coverage, uh, limited. So that, that's the reason we've kind of shied away from that. The ground's pretty steep. The other thing is to put in the parking lots because it's pretty steep. Requires a pretty drastic change to the site. So rather than do that, we asked around and tried to find an off-site spot. I'm sure you guys are familiar with, uh, the Italian Fest Italiana up on one thirty-second and Fort. We're, we're somewhat modeling our event handling similar to theirs, where you've got a shuttle, and people that follow the rules will go to the parking stalls, be shuttled up there.
Doug, how many, how many stalls are you, over here, how many stalls are you, you know, off-site parking are you gonna have available?
We looked at it. We think we're gonna have at least seventy-seven. And talking to the owner, he mentioned there were some other spots that we could use as well, but we looked at the one site, two point one miles away, and there's seventy-seven parking spots we can get on that site. So that almost triples our capacity.
Where's, where's the parking located at?
It's on forty-eighth, forty-eighth Street exit in that industrial area. So you can come right up McKinley. It makes a nice loop going in there. It's not as tight as the, the Festas is, but.
And so they have six events per year. How many of those events would require this additional parking?
Don't know that for sure. There's one big event that happens every three years that will certainly require it. The other ones, sometimes it will, sometimes it won't. The neighbors, some of them are here, and they may have a better feel for how many people are there. There's, there's some drone photos of cars parked on the grass and so forth. There is a, an old railroad right away on the low side of the site that comes out and, and ties into Sergeant Street, but one of the criteria in the review was not to have access to Sergeant Street. That's all, you know, an old right away, it's just kind of a gravel, minimum maintenance spot. So we decided not to use that if we could find off-site parking on pavement. So that's where we got to on that stuff. Let me look at my notes here and see what else was an issue. We're gonna try to notify, again with the communication, the neighbors said they could kind of tell when things were gonna happen, but we wanna get a more formal notification that, hey, this is coming up, so everybody's aware. And people don't get surprised that on their way to wherever they're going on the weekend, that all of a sudden there's a big traffic snarl at the driveway.
Would they be willing to include the city in that, notifying the city when that happens, too?
Yeah, I think so. I think as far as all of the, uh, conditions are concerned, I guess my only condition is when you say cease operations on the site, that's fairly onerous. The gentleman in front can't cook, can't, he has all of his food and things brought to him. So if that's considered part of the operations, um, we can't agree to that. I think the problems aren't with the day-to-day stuff, it's with the larger gatherings that create the traffic issue and the noise issue.
So it looks like there's an event coming up in April.
Um, I don't, I don't know.
I think that was part of the, what we had gotten. What would their plan be for that?
The tough thing is, is, um, I didn't realize the Buddhist calendar doesn't match with the calendar that we're used to, so you can't say that it's gonna be every third Saturday in July or those kind of things. That's a little nebulous. So we didn't really pin that down. The events occur on the weekends. So our parking will be available to eliminate that stuff.
I guess the question is, what is their plan with the events before these improvements? If, if it's approved and they have to make these improvements, they can't have the events on this site until that's all done, correct?
I think that's acceptable. Yeah, that's acceptable to them. Those of you that have been up there for a while, you've seen this probably multiple times, this has been going on for quite a while. It got off to a bad start. We kind of got brought in after the bad start, and we're just trying to get to a place that's mutually acceptable, both to the city and to the neighbors. I don't know that this is that onerous a use, but.
How long have they been a client of yours?
Hmm?
How long have they been a client of yours?
I'd say with maybe the last two years. There's originally, um, an architect involved in the middle of it that we were trying to work with, and communication was bad, and ultimately, they came in and asked if we could help them, kind of take, take the reins of this. We agreed to do that, so that's why I'm standing here in front of you.
I'm gonna ask somebody from the Buddhist society to, to speak.
This is Endo, he's the, he's the leader.
Endo, is it?
Yeah, Endo.
Okay, if, if you'd please name an address for the record, too.
My name is Endo Baza. I live on that properties, nine eighty-six one, on that properties. I'm the one who in charge of that ceremonies and most Buddhist monk, and who run that, everything's I'm run by myself. And I have that community there. As would have any other place to gathering, and we try to bind this line and try to, you know, use as a, uh, our, for our religious worship place and as other culture come, all the Korean people, we're Korean, come from the, yeah, Burma, so.
How long have you been there?
I lived that place over six, several years, since two thousand eighteen, yeah.
And have you been operating a, a religious facility or function out of that facility, out of that location for that long?
Right, sir. And I came here in United States in two thousand seventeen, in the, uh, in, in the candidate avenue that there was very, in the, is in the main of the houses, so it's a very small place. And then we moved to this place. Other than that, I'm, I'm in Burma, sorry, I'm working in Burma.
And now you're coming before us today and asking for the request.
Special use permits, yes.
Special use permit, right, so what has taken you so long to, to try and, and ask for this special use permit if you've been operating for seven years out of this?
We bought this land started from two thousand eighteen, and we started this in two thousand, two thousand, actually, with this two D, maybe not, this in January. And that time, uh, the person who represent us is a different person. And I think due to the COVID, we came here due to the COVID that they have, like a probably here already here, due to the COVID, so everything stopped there, and we lost contact with our main engineer. And then the representative is also changed, so later I'm trying to figure out myself what is going on. I, I think later in two thousand thirteen, twenty-three, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and I started to recontact with that. So we started to, you know, keep this going on again.
But, but you've been operating somewhat outside the rules.
Yes, uh.
To this point, so, so I have a little bit of problem with, with, with that, the fact, the fact that you've been operating outside of the rules, and now you're coming to, to, to ask for proper.
To, yeah, to be honest, so we bought this lot, to our knowledge, we don't have a many knowledge about. But we said, we thought that is a big learning, because we, that we are do very small things, we are do with our group like that, which is a prayer, sometimes people come, so it's a big learn with us, okay, but later we are told that you cannot do like that, and you need to apply into the city, uh, city council, so therefore we start to find the, find the, that I keep that to try to do these things.
Okay, what, what's the largest number of people you've had at any, any one group?
At the very beginning, uh, right now, in my hand, we, I have eighteen, uh, sorry, eighty, eight zero households, members with me. As my member, eighty, is my, uh, uh, permanent member, we can say.
That's members. How many, at, at your events, what is the maximum number of people you've, the, the most you've ever had at any one event over that course of?
Yeah, the most will come like a, over two hundred sometime, like the most event like, three years, like we do ordination ceremony, it could become two, two hundred fifty, something like that.
And do you expect that, the number to increase or be about the same for?
Be about the same, sir, because sometime, because other boards also have, now, they have their organization in other place. But before that, sometime they don't have, but now link in the other place, or they also have their organization, they have around their own.
But in Omaha, there's eighty members?
Yeah, eighty, eighty household, yeah, it's permanent.
In the households, how many people are there?
Could be like, uh, I don't know, some, three hundreds, I'm not twenty, but not everybody come, like I, you know, not everybody come to the temple.
But, but, but one of the, one of the, um, recommendation requirements is that you'll have, you'll be able to have no more than a hundred and eighty-four in attendance at any one time. How are you gonna comply with that?
If, if it is like that, so we will, see we will do the small, we reduce the size. And also we hope that if it is approved later on, we've, you know, develop the more bigger place. Like because in the dance, we have a very big length, it's more very, not a space. So we want to develop, you know, bigger, so we can accommodate a lot of people.
Okay, within the rules?
Yeah, within the rules, yes. Everything will be within the rules.
And then, and then the parking issue, you said you're going to have some offsite parking there as well?
Yeah.
So what's going to prevent anybody from coming to your facility? Once the forty six stalls, Doug, is that how many, forty six?
Forty six on site.
Once those are occupied, what's going to prevent anybody if they're coming there just to park on site like they have been doing?
Yeah.
Instead of parking on the offsite location? What's going to prevent them from doing that?
That's, that's likely going to happen. There'll be personnel at the driveway that'll say, go around to the off street parking, similar to what the Festa Taliana does. You get in there, you can't park. They tell you to go down to the ball fields down there off of Fort Street. And one other, a couple of other things. The one eighty four is tied to the forty six parking stalls. We expect maybe we'll have more than that, but if we add seventy seven offsite, we've tripled the capacity. One of the other things that came out of the neighborhood meeting was there's drainage issues down below us. Barns getting flooded and so forth. That's another reason we didn't really want to add any more impervious coverage to that onsite. Exacerbate the flooding down below us. We do have water quality and storm detention for the paving that we've added onsite.
I'm going to ask Eric to comment on the parking, which you just talked about there. Any other questions for? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come on down. If you're, if you've got anybody that's going to speak, come on down the front and we'll get you called up here. You're speaking first, okay.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My name is Valerie Cook and I live at six zero zero six Rainwood Road. And I'm about a block and a half away from the place where the Buddhist ceremonies take place. This goes way back to two thousand eighteen. Actually, my husband and I have lived on our property for forty one years now. We moved there in nineteen eighty one because we wanted to live someplace where we still had city amenities, but without the noise of the city and a nice quiet acreage environment. Of course, till the big storms came through and took away a bunch of our trees last year, but that's another issue. But anyway, so I'm going to tell you just a little bit about the history of this. Indeed, this all started back in two thousand eighteen with the folks moving in to the site at ninety eight sixty one North Sixtieth. There were other people who lived next door to them to the north at the time. The noise was so bad for those folks that they could not even go out into their yard and have a conversation, do any work, anything like that, because the noise from the ceremonies was loud. The first time I remember hearing about this was in October of two thousand eighteen. My husband and I were inside our house. We were watching television. The doors and windows were closed and the floor started vibrating in our house. And the noise was coming from loudspeakers with gongs, bells, chanting, singing, lots of drums. I could hear it as far away as three to four blocks from my house when I took a walk down a little street that's near me. Anyway, and that's been going on for some time. The only thing we were told we could do because there was a permit and process that these folks could have religious celebrations, which is perfectly fine, but it was very noisy. Anyway, but we were told, call the Douglas County Sheriff's Department. Over the course of these many now six and a half years or so, we have had the Douglas County Sheriff's out there, at least the sheriff deputies out there, at least twenty plus times because of noise issues. And there have been at least ten times that they actually went to the property, not to our place to talk to us, but to the property itself. And the noise has toned down some.
Excuse me a little bit Valerie, with that, to that point though, what, so what have the law enforcement done?
What they do, they come and speak with us, the deputies, sometimes there are two, sometimes one person. And we tell them that the noise is getting to us and that it rattles the doors and windows if it's that loud at our house. And what they do is go, I believe, to the property at ninety eight sixty one North Sixtieth and speak with folks there. And the noise goes down some, but then sometimes it gets noisier again after that. Anyway, but at least now we don't have the vibration issue. We can hear the noise when we've called, but it's not vibrating the house, so that's improved. The neighbors that did live next door felt that it was so loud that they had to move away because they couldn't even do things in their yard at the time. One other time, early on, when these folks had moved in, there was a loud explosion. And I walked over toward that direction and there was smoke in the air. And we called nine one one and the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department came and brought several vehicles, probably about five or so of their emergency vehicles with the smoke hanging around. And it seemed like no one seemed to know what was going on or why that had happened. The other issue that has been brought up by the gentleman from the engineering company was the issue with the cars going in and out or the traffic situation there. And where the driveway is to the property is at the crest of a hill, just north of Rainwood Road where I, or south of Rainwood Road where I live. And it's a two lane road. It is a road that is used by the two volunteer fire departments in our area to transport patients to a manual hospital or to get to fires or other emergencies. And on Sundays, if there are events going on at the Buddhist compound there, there are people standing out in the middle of Sixtieth Street wearing the high vis vests, the orange and yellow green vest, directing traffic in and out and stopping the rest of the traffic on the road at the time. So anyway, just to, I guess, sum things up here a little bit from my way of thinking. I feel like sometimes we are being persecuted for living there because apparently the people from Berkshire Hathaway, who, the real estate agent who sold the property to these folks, told them they could do anything they wanted in the country. It wouldn't make any difference. So far, because of all the times we've had to call the Douglas County Sheriff's Department because of noise, I feel like that whatever permit they might have had or didn't have at that point, the folks having the celebrations have not paid any attention to the rules they've set for themselves with the number of people coming and going, the frequency with which they have the celebrations. The celebrations have gone on till ten thirty at night at times in my neighborhood. And it's very noisy when people are trying to go to sleep at night on Sunday night and get ready for work the next morning with the noise going on. And I guess that's basically as much as.
So one question for you. You mentioned Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate. How do you know they set that?
I don't know if they did. We're just, it's a presumption on my part.
So that's just here.
They were the ones selling the property.
That's fine, okay.
The neighbor that lived to the north of them was a lawyer and tried to take care of things to get some of this quieted down. It was his understanding that they were told by Berkshire Hathaway that they could do whatever they wanted.
Hi Valerie, last year, for example, how many times was the noise unbearable for you?
Oh, well, at least twenty plus times over the course.
Just last year?
Oh, no, 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 this is over the course of the last six and a half.
How many last year would you say?
In the last year, do you want me to go through my list?
I mean, two or three or ten or?
Twenty five, pardon me?
Twenty five.
Twenty five times.
Last year?
Yes.
Okay. And over the course since two thousand eighteen, you've called the Douglas County Sheriff's twenty times? Sometimes you just met.
No, I, we've called, this is over the course of several years that we've called them. I, I was able to get a list of their times and I sent it to, I don't know where PJ Butler. I'm not sure who that gentleman is, but I keep sending him information. And it's got a list of all the times we've called the Douglas County Sheriff's Department.
How did the meeting go between both sides?
I was not at the meeting.
You weren't there?
I was at a medical appointment that day, so I couldn't go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But the lady who was going to speak to you next was there.
Okay, great.
Valerie, real quick, how many times last year did you gather a large gathering? Or where there was traffic issues or people directing traffic in and out? Is that a similar, I'm just?
Well, they, you know.
I'm trying to differentiate if there are certain times when the drums.
We expect, because of what they gave us, the information that we were given about the frequency with which these things would happen, that it would be the second Sunday of the month for four different months out of the year. And there were more times than that where it was a Saturday and a Sunday. Or it might have been music playing into the night for several nights in a row. And one of the other ladies who's here with me actually recorded how many times that happened where there were, I don't, I don't have equipment to record that kind of thing, but she recorded that it was like six or seven nights in a row that there was music playing into the evening.
Okay.
It was more than one time that that happened.
Okay.
Val, I have a quick question. I know you weren't at the meeting, but in your mind, would improved communication with the organization, the religious organization, could that?
From what my neighbors tell me, that that would probably be a very good thing.
Okay.
I feel as though we've not known when something, an event was going to be occurring. It is hard to get past that area on a Sunday morning or during the day if there are several cars going in and out of that area. I think it's dangerous for people to stand out in the street directing traffic in the area. Just my way of thinking.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are there any other proponents?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Opponents, I mean, opponents.
Susan Whitehead McGillic and I live at ninety nine oh nine North Sixtieth Street. I am the blissfully ignorant neighbor who purchased the property from the attorney. And I purchased it in June of twenty two. And so I think by July, I was very well aware of, of these activities. They do indeed happen more often than the dates that they state. And I believe it's because they're doing rehearsals for the big events. And while some of the statement claims that they have the rehearsals or will have the rehearsals inside their outbuilding, their outbuilding is a barn kind of quonset hut that's metal. I don't believe there's HVAC in it, so the doors are opened because obviously in the summer months, it's very, very warm. So there isn't any sound insulation that stops any of that going. I will say upfront, obviously not an engineer or a person who's ever read planning report, twenty four pages of planning reports. So all of this is very new to me and just got this yesterday and was, was trying to go over it and digest it. I will thank Mr. Dreesen. He did host that meeting last week. I did attend as well as two other neighbors, a couple that couldn't be here today. It was very, very, very helpful, obviously, to meet Endo and, you know, to be able to talk. And we have each other's cell number, we have each other's email. Again, very, very helpful. Communication is always key when there's anything to do with neighbors. But that being said, I think all of us purchased our property out there with the thought of being in the woods, being quiet, being idyllic, and not having a space next door to you or across the street or a couple houses down that's designated as a religious site for ceremonies. And whether or not there, there's music accompanying and that or not, it just is a lot of people. And it feels very commercial in nature, which, you know, it, we're residential. But just because when they are having the gatherings, it's fifty, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty. And up until this point, you know, we know that they were not permitted to do that and yet it still was happening. So I know I have a concern of, again, let's, compliance and also enforcement. It has not been our wish to call the Sheriff's Department, which was really, we were told and explained at one point, well, several of us have had conversations with Mike Friend, our county commissioner. And he has said, well, that's the only thing you can do. Please, please do it. They need to record it. They need to know how much time they're coming out. That is such an unwise use of resources that we would not really want to be doing. But even going forward, if these special use permits are allowed, again, that comes down to compliance. Is there somebody standing at the top of the driveway clicking on the number of occupants and, and giving a count or counting the number of cars? That is all, you know, up to them. And Endo himself, he explained to us in the meeting, he, he is inside the temple during those events. He's, he's inside, you know, running that part of it. He, he was not even aware actually of a lot of the cars and the number of the cars. And, and I have photos and, and was showing them to him where they park and they, so they, the way they've been entering onto their property, because they do have the big, you know, five acre spot out back, it is a hill. But they enter about maybe eight to ten feet next to my property line. And they have, it's made, they've made a road. And they drive down on that and then get into the back area to park. That's also where they had their stage, which was not permitted, and they have removed that. So that's lovely, but they had a very large stage and a large backdrop where they held everything. And then they also have been erecting tents. Don't know if those are permitted. We have a very, we're all in septic out there. We're not city sewer. So what's happening with the sanitation issues? And, you know, I, again, reading through this, it looks like there have been some really good recommendations as to what has to take place before these permits could go, go forward. And, and I, the applicant must cease operations. I, I agree with you. I do know that again, from learning about Endo and, and how he, he doesn't prepare his own food. So, so he does have members bring him things daily. And two, three, four, five cars, you know, that, there's plenty of space for that right around there, building. It's, it's the events and it's the, kind of the slippery slope of, you know, what, what stops the, because even in this development proposal, it starts with second Sunday, April, June, November. And then it talks about, well, then there's something every three years. And then it talks about, well, there is a special wrist tying. And then that's Saturdays and Sundays. And then at the very end, it's during the summer months, it's five days a week from five to eight. So.
What's, what's every day for five, what?
They practice on their drums up to five days a week from five to eight in the summer months. And that's in their statement. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we, as property owners, we have the right to preserve the value of our property. And I know that has to be weighed with granting permission for religious activity. They're both constitutional rights. It, it feels problematic that, and again, I empathize that maybe they were led to believe that because they had six acres in the woods, these large events could happen. But with that and the added additional issues with Sixtieth Street, and Valerie addressed those, the other issue is when the cars are on the property and have been on the property, if any vehicle had, any, you know, EMT or fire vehicle had to get onto the property, it wouldn't be able to access it. There's just the one, there's just right now. There's just the one, there's just right now, they just have the one egress coming in and out right by my lot line.
You, you, you'd mentioned that you had called law enforcement several times, neighbors have called law enforcement several times over the course of years, right? And you also, I think, mentioned, if I heard you right, that you knew it wasn't properly permitted.
Right.
But did you ever notify the city of, and complain to the city about that?
Yes.
You did?
Well, personally, I know Val did. That's how we became, had our relationship with, with Mr. Friend. And, and what was interesting, and, and again, I guess I have that question on this plan as well, his, his comment was, because we knew that the stage was not permitted for, there was another structure they'd put up that was not permitted for, they've added on to the outside lots of railings and balconies and things. And he said, well, cities inspectors would have to come out and look at it. And so you, city inspectors don't work, as far as I know, Saturdays and Sundays. So we, we've, there's always been this disconnect between anybody coming out to look or to inspect. So again, he said, well, you just have to call the sheriff. And that's what we've done.
The good thing about this situation, I mean, that this happens on other projects that we've, we've either done conditional use permits or special use permits, is at least now, we have a mechanism to hold over the applicant. That we've approved a special use permit, if there's complaints from the neighbors and it comes to us, that can always be revoked. Now, that happens at the city council level, not at the, the planning board level, but by, but at least going through the proper channels and getting this permitted correctly, you have that mechanism to fall back on. Because right now, there's nothing.
Right, right. And they've, and yeah, they've continued to have all of these events, even though there's nothing. The, when you'd asked the number of times, the one accounting that we do have is from, so we came in August and then we were on the consent agenda and all went home. But since that time, on July, from July twenty-sixth to February twenty-second, there were twenty-seven separate events.
Events? Of how many people?
Um, they vary from, I would say, fifty to one-fifty to two-hundred.
So a minimum of fifty?
Mm-hmm, yeah. When they, when they have, when we can hear the noise and hear the, hear the people and, you know, see everybody out in the backyard and, you know, which is great. Everyone, I want to be able to have a backyard party too sometime, but that's not the issue. I did, I did have a question procedurally as well. Are these two permits tied to one another? And can one permit be approved without the other?
Eric, gorgeous. In a bit, are you going to do that?
I mean, there, one activity, the activity from the religious assembly ties directly into the parameters for the, the special use permit for the North Hills. So, I mean, yes, although they are two separate use permits, I mean, they are essentially tied together. I guess specifically.
But they, they need the parking to be able to accommodate the numbers that they're asking for, for the special use permit, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's like why I said before, that they would not be able to have any of these events until the parking is completed and permitted and approved, and all of that would have to cease.
Thank you very much.
Valerie, did you have something more you wanted to talk?
Yes, I do.
Please enter, again, your name and address for the record.
Just briefly, I do want to.
Your name and address again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Valerie Cook, C O O K, six zero zero six Rainwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. I do want to say that we started back in two thousand twenty, when the other owner lived next door, where the place is where Susan lives now, the lawyer. And we came down to the city planning meeting in two thousand twenty. I actually was at a sleep apnea test all night long, didn't sleep more than eighteen minutes that night, and came down anyway the next day, and no one from the Buddhist group was here, and so they laid it over. And it didn't come up again until August of last year, two thousand twenty-four. We came to that one as well with information that we were going to share about the number of times that the Douglas County Sheriff folks had come out to visit, the number of times we had heard them making noise past the three o'clock time in the afternoon, et cetera. So this goes way back when. I have spoken with people in the planning department. I've spoken with the public, or the Ponca Hills Volunteer Fire Department folks, Irvington Volunteer Fire Department. They have been concerned over the years of sanitation issues and safety for the participants, should they have to come in and help anyone with an emergent situation. So I'm, I'm sorry, I left that piece out, but this has been going on for close to five years, at least with us trying to make contact.
Got it.
And that's, now I'm, now I'm not going to talk anymore. Thank you all.
Are there any other opponents which speak? Okay. Doug and Endo, would you like to come up and, and, and address some of the concerns that you've heard here? And again, name and address is for the record, please.
Douglas Dreesen, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road.
Endo Basa, nine S S one North Sixtieth Street.
Thank you.
According to, thanks for the, I will never come and present their concern. According to their concerns, I'm right, but the last concern, they said the last year's twenty-seven times is not correct. We never done this, it's a twenty-seven day event, we don't, it's not possible. But some, like I said, some, in the summer, you know, kids are coming, maybe they're playing like small groups, playing the drum, practicing the current dance in the, in the band, it got me a little bit, but, and also, the concern about the traffics, within this year, not, not even a lot of people come here, nothing happened in our, our environment to them. You can understand, you can imagine how we manage that. They see the people direct the traffic. It's only the V event, and we worried that some people may not know this place correctly, so that's why some, but we are not live, we are not, that, my people are not go to on the streets and wave everybody. They are aware with that color, so people know that, okay, this is our place, need to come here. And also sanitation, we concern there, so we have a, we hire the temporarily, you know, soon, like we have from the company, we, we do a B event, we keep on the property. And also, my land, the, the property I'm living is a little high. So most of my land is in the, the, the deeps lower, all the waters go, most of the water from my properties on the hill are going down to, to our law. Isn't that, I think it's not good to their property also, as well. And for the, for the, for the noisy, I can promise that, we can restore that until all the proves, and we will not do that. And also for the operation, we want, we were until the, the city approved us and we were, you know, at, we, you know, do everything that comply with the city laws. And if we need later, we will develop, we add more space for the car parking, we have a, you know, that planned also. And so in these years, none of my, our people, none of the, my, I'll never concern about that, even the car have a, with the explosion, that's never happened, within this fight over five or six years. Because we, sometimes, somehow, we understand that we should not disturb our, the, our neighbor, and we never, we need to care the neighbor also. We try to, very careful about the neighbor. So within this year, no problem come in the property, on our property, none of our car or vehicle go to their property. What are, is, inside, everything is inside our property only. That's what we, because we understand, we keep everybody on up, these people, we keep, please make sure. But only the that, you know, the noise, see sometimes the kids, you know, you said, don't, don't, don't hit, they want to hit sometimes. That's all, but not, not late, not late. The ladies said in two thousand eighty, there was explosive, like, what are my people? Is right, or that one time only, it's two thousand eighty, and we do that, it, like they do, he do firework, a big firework. See then, later on, never happened in my, but there's no never, sound like a firework happened anymore.
Why did you do it then?
That time, they just celebrate something, I forgot that we are doing like, it is a, maybe in the summertime, like we do rose ceremony, and they, like a happy day, he, but, now he don't know that. I said, why would I do it like that? See then, never happened. You, compared to the, this year, they, they also worry about the traffics. That's when nothing happened in traffic here. So that's why, if we have a permit, we, we can add more parking lot on there, there will be more better. We will try to develop the, everything.
It sounds like a big piece of this is just the communication with the neighbors and communication with the city. And so is, is your organization willing to give advance notice to the neighbors and the city before you have any of these larger?
Yes, a little, I, I would do that, actually.
That way, I think that's helpful with event management. You know, you might coordinate with the city and, you know, people can come and see, see how it looks and.
Yeah, it is my weak point, you know, to, 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 not to communicate with the neighbor, because to be honest, I'm also not, you know, hard, something hard to communicate with them. I'm a, I'm not prior, suddenly, I'm not dare to, I'm a, you know, hesitant to know somebody's door and call them, to be honest. That's why, that is a weird, but now we have a communication, we will let them know if we do. But we will store that ceremony, the April ceremony, we will store that one, and we will store that one, we will store until the prove, and we will develop the parking lot if it is approved.
Endo, even though kids want to bang on the drums, or there's practice, that's not an event that what you're calling it, that is disturbing to the neighbors.
Right.
And so even if it's not late, I mean, that's, that's a quality of life issue for them that, that they have to endure. Even though it's not an event, it's still something that they have to deal with. And so what's, what, what about maybe taking some of that off of?
Yeah.
You know, the only time that you would be able to use the drums or the horns and, and, and the music is on scheduled events.
Right, okay, yeah. We, I will take care of everything now. I will take care of it, I promise, they will check it, yeah, every, everything will be taken care of, yeah.
And when you have the larger events, what restroom facilities do you have that are being used?
Yeah, we, we hire, we hire the, the toilet outside, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, that one. And in my, in the property also, we also have a total of five restroom. We have a two bedroom there, in one bedroom, there's a four bedroom, another bedroom, there's a one bedroom. So total, we have a five bedroom, and plus we hire the, the toilet outs, toilet for the company.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you bring in a number of porta potties?
Yeah, yeah.
For the events, okay.
Sometimes two, sometimes four or three bedroom outside.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doug, you, you mentioned the off, off-site parking. Do you have a formal agreement? Are you in the process of getting a formal agreement for that, or how is that going to work?
We're in the process of getting a formal agreement. I didn't want to come down here and mention that without talking to the owners, who I talked to either yesterday or the day before. They're willing to go along with it. There's a few details to work out, but they have no problem using the whole facility on Saturdays and Sundays.
What about other days of the week?
I didn't talk to him about that.
Doug, you mentioned that number two was a nonstarter for you.
Well, two, two is more a clarification, because he needs a place to live. And if, if that's part of the operations, what you guys are saying is operations, I don't know that we can agree that he can cease operations.
Such as?
Staying there and being able to receive his followers and their food and so forth. And I don't know that the neighbors have any problem with that. I think it's, it's all tied to these events, and how do we manage them in a better manner? Again, I go back to LaFesta, Taliana, probably a bigger event than this, but there's ways to handle it when it occurs infrequently. If it's occurring all the time, that's a different deal. My understanding is it is not occurring all the time, and it's always on weekends.
Well, in the short term, if, say you have this event in April, I don't know what the popular, or the count of people is, is going to be at that. Obviously, you're not going to have your parking lot in place for that.
No.
At that time, so you'd have to have this alternative parking available, because they can't park all over the ground.
Right, and I, I don't know that we're going that route. I think Endo said he's willing to postpone the April event until we get in compliance. He wants to be in compliance, that's why we're here. When they started, I think what teed all of this up, and maybe Mike remembers, Mike Carter, went in there, knocked down a bunch of trees, started grading, well, you just can't do that in an ED district. So they red tagged, and then, all right, let's try to get this done. Well, the leader of that team didn't get it done to the point where Endo felt abandoned, showed up at our office one afternoon, and we said we'd try to help him.
So I guess, Eric, if, what other items under that are involved in that? That you said entitlements and permit issues. You, you just addressed the permit, what else is that?
Are you talking about specifically for ceasing operations?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if there's workaround.
Well, I'm, look, Endo living in the home and a few individuals bringing food, that, that's not, that's not religious assembly, that's not what we're talking about. So, yeah, of course, that would absolutely be fine.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Sure.
On the record. I think the event stuff, we're willing to suspend.
Yeah.
Until we're in compliance, but that's not going to mean the normal everyday things aren't going to continue to go on.
Is there a contractor lined up to do all of this work yet?
Uh, not at this point. We want to make sure we're on the right track with, with the city. Again, we've got to get the, the parking agreement finalized as well, but I don't, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Again, I think the neighborhood meeting was pretty good. My, my impression was just improved conversation goes a long way in, in resolving this problems. I use the analogy of you're having a patio party in your backyard, you tell the neighbor, you know, hey, I know you usually mow at this time, but if you wouldn't mind mowing a day in advance or whatever, that usually solves the problem, and you don't need to have the sheriff come out. I think that resonated with the people, just being able to know who to talk to and get results. Part of the requirements, there's a noise requirement in the conditions, that they've got to keep the noise down to a certain level. We agreed all of that. There's, there's a desire to get to the right place, as Mr. Morris referred to, here's a permit, here's all the conditions, these are the rules, we know them, the neighbors know them, you guys know them. And then you have the enforcement ability for law enforcement. As Mr. Morris said, right now, it's somewhat the Wild West. And I don't think it's these guys' intent to just go out there and willy-nilly break rules. I think it's more, they don't know what the rules are. Now, there was a, an op statement submitted before that I'm virtually certain wasn't prepared with their input. So when they're not complying with it, it's because that wasn't how they were doing things before.
Well, one of the issues we, we've talked about, the, the neighbors, is obviously the noise, and we do have noise organisms. And if you're using amplified sound, you know, you can go out there and measure it and see whether they're in compliance or not. Have you discussed that with your client?
Yeah, it's, we went through all of the conditions. The, the one we had problems with was, was just addressed. What do you consider his residing on the property as the leader of those monks? Is that religious service, or is that just residential? Eric answered that. So I think we're clear there. All of the other conditions we can live with. We can get a decibel meter for Endo to use, but hey, when, when you start getting to this point, they need to either tone it down or cut it off. Ms. Cook said, a lot of times, once they got notified, the sound went down and. just, just like a political function, the sound kind of goes down when people bang on the glasses, but then it, it tends to rise back up until somebody says, hey, you know, quiet down again. I think that's, that's how this is going to work, the communication. If you're, A, if you know in advance, that helps. B, if you know who to call when it's irritating, that helps as well.
What about condition number five? That submit eleven in compliance with revised operations plan noting a maximum event attendance of one hundred and eighty-four individuals?
I was, I was going to ask about that. It seemed to me that the one eighty-four was tied to the forty-six parking stalls. So because of that, and because of knowing what's happened in the past, we got to find more than a hundred, than forty-six parking stalls. We found seventy-seven more. The forty-six is times four to get to the one eighty-four. I don't know about you guys, but I don't see four people in a car very often. So I think the off-site parking's a big deal. To be frank, they've got tons of place, tons of room to park, it's all on the grass, and trying to run even forty-six cars in and out of one driveway just doesn't work very well. It's reaction to the, the neighbors' complaints about safety is, if we're running a shuttle up there once in a while and there's one vehicle going in and out after the stalls are taken, that's a lot better than fifteen guys trying to get in there and there's no spots left.
Okay. I'm going to backtrack a little bit. I didn't ask if there were any other opponents that wanted to speak other than the two that spoke. Are there any other opponents that want to speak to this? Okay.
Give me just a second, I want, I got to read, I can't speak.
We'll need your name and address, please, too.
Crystal Vaughn, ninety-eight oh four North Sixtieth Street. I was the one that had the list of the twenty-eight activities. No, it is not their scheduled activities, it's not the big events. It's the practice sessions in between. Those run from five to, I don't have my paper, four o'clock to sometimes ten o'clock at night. That's what's frustrating. My husband goes to work sometimes four o'clock in the morning, which means he's up at three o'clock, a considerable bedtime, probably seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. We can't do that when our house is reverberating. I sent in my paper Tuesday of last week to Butler, not Butler, PJ Butler. I hope that was presented to you guys as well with the thirteen neighbors. We have indirect vicinity of the Buddhist compound, there's six neighbors. We're all affected by it except for one because she's in a valley. We do not mind the kids playing, we do not mind seeing the families getting together, holding these ceremonies at all. Our major concern is the traffic. I do have a thumb drive, would you like that, or is it too late for that?
What's, what's on the thumb drive? What do you have on the thumb?
It's a piece, just a picture, piece of paper. The, the banging of the drums, reverberating the house, disrupting our peace is one of the major problems. The traffic is the other major problem. We have, on the thumb drive, there's the sound that's emanating from this property up until ten o'clock at night, and that was my two major concerns.
I assume this is the entrance off Sixtieth?
Correct. How is, they are a very respectable community member. There are no issues, there's no violence, there's no gunfire, there's no gang-related activities, they are correct on that. They have had no accidents, but I think he's misunderstanding accidents or problems with how are, if somebody has a heart attack, God forbid, how is EMS going to approach? And if there's structure fires, how are they going to, with this many vehicles, with this many spots? Again, it's residential and agricultural. We didn't assume this would be this type of situation. And we've been there since it was a dirt road. I personally have not, I married into the family, but we've been there since it was a dirt road, we're the only homes out there. You need to have, how did you put it? You need to have improvement, you need to have progress. The city is going to progress and build up around you, but we didn't think it would come to this type of progress in the residential area, quiet community.
Crystal, I'm sorry if you already said this, did you attend the meeting?
I attended the last Tuesday, or last Wednesday, yes.
What were your thoughts?
Same as I've stated here. And communication is key, correct? He came over, Mr. Endo come over, I believe back in the beginning one time, knocked on the door and invited all the neighbors, which was wonderful, but of course, I didn't feel comfortable showing up to that event, but...
Crystal, if, if there was a limited number of times that the music would be played or the drums would be played, you know, five times, is, is that, is that a fair compromise where they would not be having practice? They would not be having the kids play the drums? And you'd know about the times, or, you know, the days of the events, does that seem like a fair compromise?
We have no problem with that.
Okay.
If it sticks to the...
If it sticks to the listed events?
Four, four or five times a year and ten to three, we have no problem with that at all.
And I don't know the number, but I'm just saying, instead of it being nightly for practice and, it's still noise.
Right, yeah, it's still noise, and they have moved it inside to a barn, and it's lessened, but it's in the summer months, the barn is open, it's still like you're outside.
Okay.
And it's still, I've got my air conditioner going, I've got my ceiling fan on, I got my TV up. My house, the dogs growl, the, the house vibrates, it is extremely overbearing.
Thank you, Crystal. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? See, and now I'm going to close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so...
Make sense of all this?
I will start with, with the noise and the measurements of sound. So this is always a challenging issue because as we sit here, we're not experts on sound or what decibel readings are. There can be changes based on size of a site, topography. But just for reference, the zoning code for the zoning district that this site and the surrounding properties are, the sound level limit in, in DBA, the maximum between seven AM and nine PM is sixty decibels. Overnight from nine PM to seven AM, that goes to fifty-five decibels. So as a perspective, you know, just using a couple of Google images and, and decibels and take this for what it is, you know, it's not accounting for distance and, you know, I don't know the proximity, but a sixty decibel is, is a normal conversation lo- level or dishwashers. Vacuum cleaners or traffic is seven, seventy. You know, and I know this is going to change the further away it is, but for reference, a lawnmower is one hundred decibels. So when you're talking about sixty decibels and that measurement occurring at any adjacent property, well, if you're that north property or, or one of the directly adjacent abutting properties, it's not going to take a lot of sound before you're violating that threshold. So, you know, the issue with the drums and, and hearing that there's speakers and that this is consistent, and this is, this is a real challenge in order to be able to comply the way that the operation has currently, you know, illegally been operating. So, you know, I think that's an important component that, that needs to, to be figured out because the way things are going, I'm sure that they're not in compliance with the zoning code allowed decibels. So I'll start there. Yes, that last picture that we saw with all the vehicles and, and that Crystal had brought up with, with concerns about, you know, how can, you know, emergency responders, you know, access the site completely? That is a very concerning matter for the city. Not only that, sanitation, you know, the, the question about, you know, plumbing and porta potties, well, there's a process, you can't just use porta potties for, you know, a commercial operation, which this is, you know? This isn't a one-time backyard event when somebody's bringing a porta potty and having a gathering. I mean, this is a consistent theme. So, yes, I know with their proposal, they're talking about expanding restroom facilities, but for the time being, that hasn't been, you know, our plumbing codes haven't been complied with. And also the concern about occupa- occupation within the buildings. There's been no permits for some of these structures, I don't know the barn, I don't know ingress egress, I don't know fire extinguishers. So these are all very concerning items and, you know, beyond just the, the typical zoning matters and number of parking stalls, I mean, those are real-life safety concerns that the city would have and that we think is very important to, to get remedied, you know, immediately. And when we say cease operations, yes, we're not talking about the delivery of food or, you know, a prayer service with a few individuals, but it's the gathering of people, you know, without oversight and the proper permits that's really a concern. You know, I, the, the resumetal did a good job of, of trying to clarify how many events, how many people, but when I sit here and listen, it's kind of all over the place. The numbers, some of it is in the range that I thought I knew of, of what the proposal is and, and others aren't. The city is not comfortable without further official review of shuttling park, you know, from an off-site parking site. I'm not going to sit here and say, yeah, we can support that. So our recommendation, you know, is going to stay the same about limiting any operation. Whenever this becomes operational, I mean, if they want us to take a step back and, and look at shuttling, I mean, yeah, that, then you're, you're probably talking about a layover and, and we have to, to analyze that further because, you know, in reality, those really have to be buttoned down because we've seen it from other operations and if it's not successful and, and clear of what the expectation and what the requirements will be, then it just won't be adhered to. So, you know, when you're talking about timeline for, for when, you know, all of these improvements and a commercial parking lot that could, could come in, I mean, this is going to take several months. This is not some easy matter. So, you know, not only is whatever event possibly in April, I mean, you're looking at probably most of the warm months until, you know, this could be worked out. And if you're talking about shuttling, you're just looking at another layover and delay. So I think, you know, expectations have to, you know, really be scrutinized of, of what the timing and how quick that this could be done.
Eric, a quick, quick question for you on that. You identified a number of issues of concern, parking, sanitation, noise. Are you still comfortable making the recommendation you're going to make without further investigating how they're going to comply or how that, how they need to comply with those concerns?
I'm looking at my director if he wants to chime in. I, I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I think the conditions as written up and with the clear expectations about ceasing operations, I believe staff would be comfortable moving forward as, as recommended. But, yeah, so, yeah, Mike, thanks for the question. Eric, for looping me in. I, I, personally, I've learned a lot from today's testimony and, and so it's made me question maybe some of the, what's really going on and how we can handle it. I, I believe that, I say that, but I think our report buttons down everything we need to. We got some catch-all conditions, right? Must comply with all city code, must comply with this. What today did for me was bring more specific issues into those conditions. So I, I think we're, we're still comfortable with our recommendation, but I say that, you know, fifty-five percent, I, I wouldn't be opposed to a layover at this point so we can continue to work on all this stuff as well. Some of the testimony I heard today, unless it is rectified, i- if this gets approved by, recommended by the planning board and approved by city council, unless this is, unless some of those issues that the neighbors brought to our attention are addressed, I'm, I would question if these, as it's operating today and as it's operated in the past, if they're compatible land uses. I also have concern, a lot of concern about any structures being occupied without the benefit of permits. Review of those permits and inspections might, by my staff to make sure those are safe structures to be occupied.
I guess I'm just not comfortable right now without, without having, I appreciate the Corinne moving forward with being compliant on issues, but we still have a lot of issues we still haven't discussed. And as I, as he said, no, he wouldn't use practice, there wouldn't be noise. We need to address that so that there's a, there's a number that can be agreed upon, that's not too much for the neighbors, it's not too little so that, so that they can do their ceremonies. And, and all the other issues that we found out about today, I guess I, I'm looking more at layover just, just so that we can have time for them to get together again, even though they've got each other's phone numbers or the city be involved, that we figure out a plan in addition to what we've got here, that, that's really going to button it up. You know, if it's six events, then there should be no other noise coming out. They can still celebrate their, their religion, but it wouldn't be with music and drums and, and things that, you know, are disturbing to, to the neighbors. And so that's where I'm at on this, and so...
Mr. Chairman, I guess I want to add my two cents. You know, we've got four principal areas that, that we've been talking about that I think are not really addressed adequately in the recommendation. A lot of them fall within item number five with a revised operation plan. And just to restate those, we, we talked about the notification between notifying the neighbors and notifying the city of these events. We've seen noncompliance for such a long time, I think, that for, at least for a short period of time, once everything is put together, that, that we have an ability to have foreknowledge of these events so that we can have city staff and make sure that we are in fact in compliance. Another one is just meeting with the neighbors, we do that a lot. And I think we've shown here that that's going to be beneficial. And so I think that should be addressed. And this noise thing, I think we really need to button that down, like you said. It's, it's just, it's obviously a big concern for the neighbors and logically so. And I think there's a way to be able to bring the parties together, to come up with some sort of a plan that is written down, that, that can be verified so that we know in fact that it's being met. And then the last one, I guess, is the, is, is, is the off-site parking. I think number, what, number five, which one was it? It has eighty-one hundred and eighty-four individuals on that parking thing. If there is in fact going to be a plan for off-site parking, that needs to be addressed and writing so that we know how it's being done. And I guess for all those reasons, to me, it's premature at this point to, to approve this. I would be also for a layover for those reasons.
What else? Eric, do you have anything else? Okay. All right, thank you for comments, and I tend to agree. I think there's, there's a lot of open-ended questions yet that need to be answered to planning department satisfaction, to our satisfaction before I'm comfortable anyway with, with moving forward with it. So there's some work to be done, I think, with this yet. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to layover and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
He, I'm sorry, he's, he had to leave for a meeting.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you.
Thanks for your time this afternoon.
Thank you.
Discussions, guys, keep talking. Alrighty. We'll now move into the next item on the agenda, which is item number six, case number Applicant is ECG acquisitions, ALALC. Request is approval of amendment to future land use element of the city's master plan from industrial and open space to high-density residential and open space. The location is east of 93rd Avenue and Blair High Road. You're here for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me is Rob Dival of Shimmer and Associates, the consulting engineers on this particular project. So, this is the subject property outlined in black off of 93rd and Blair High Road. The proposal before you today is an amendment to the future land use map and I think this is part of your packet, but currently, what we have here is industrial, the gray with the open space here in the back. And then what we're trying to change the future land use map to is high-density residential shown here with, of course, the open space in the back. And if you go back to look at this site, you can see there's a pretty significant drainage way that goes pretty much all the way around the property to the north and west of the property. So, in order to change the master plan, there's, you know, two things you have to show. Either there's a defect in the map or there's some other further goal or important aspect of the master plan that's being fostered by the particular amendment request change. And so, we went under that item, which we think that the other important goal of the master plan that would be fostered by this particular amendment and then proposed project is the affordability housing issue. The Omaha Housing Affordability Action Plan said we're, we need like 30,000 more units between now and 2030 and so this would be an affordable housing project at this particular location. The reason why we think that this is an appropriate amendment to the master plan future land use map to allow for the multifamily is that this site actually drops 76 feet down towards the drainage way and we don't think it's really a viable industrial site because if you threw an industrial building on there, and this is just an example, you know, of a one-type, building type use, that grade right there is a 15% grade. Obviously, that doesn't comply with the codes and the requirements of driveways and streets. So, you would have to have a significant amount of fill that would have to be brought into the site to bring it to 8%. And it's my understanding that would be really infeasible to develop the site with that much fill being brought in. The site doesn't balance, you know, with one particular user. You know, industrial users like flat sites. They don't like sites that have a 76-foot grade change from the right away to the site itself. With the multifamily being proposed, there's, the city wants the street or Public Works wants the 93rd Street to kind of go up and also serve the property to the north. We could do that, as shown here in this particular exhibit, by really not going through the multifamily, really having it on the outskirts of the multifamily uses here. And with the multifamily, you can step the buildings down, so you can change the grade and you can balance it on-site. And the grade requirement for a street that comes in for residential use is, my understanding, 8%. And so, you can make the 8% work by balancing the site with a grade, stepping the buildings down towards the drainage way, and now you have a viable use here in its current condition and with the grading requirements, you really have an infeasible, both from a financial perspective but also a physical one, for an industrial use at this particular site. I think it's nice that this site really is surrounded by the drainage way and all the trees and really it's its own kind of pocket, if you will, off of Blair High Road. So, it doesn't seem to offend me too much that even though it's currently in the future land use map as industrial, it seems to be isolated enough from the other industrial uses that you could fit an affordable housing project in this particular location. The proposal is 260 units. Obviously, that's not what's before you today, but that's what they're proposing with the amendment to the future land use map. And that's really, I think, the long and short of it. We just think that this site will probably be unused for many, many, many years if ever if it continues with the industrial designation in the future land use map because we just don't think it's feasible from a topography perspective. And with the amendment to the master plan, we think there's another important aspect of the master plan that's being fostered by this proposed development, which is affordable housing. And this will be a low-income housing tax credit project. That's what Elmington Capital does. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Rob's here as well. If there's any engineering questions regarding the grade changes or the grading of the site.
Just a quick question for you.
Sure.
An opinion, Larry. Do you think that there's a shortage of industrial sites in the Omaha metro area?
Well, it's an interesting issue. I mean, you know, because the master plan also says we're supposed to preserve industrial, right? So, we have this balancing, right? So, to me, you look at this and you say, okay, we're supposed to preserve industrial, but we're also supposed to provide affordable housing. So, then it seems to me you look at the site and what is realistic with respect to the site, and I think in this particular case with the 76-foot drop in grade, it's not really feasible from a financial or physical perspective for industrial. And if you have these sort of competing, you know, balancing elements of the master plan that are, they're both good things, right? Industrial's good, affordable housing's good. Then you look at the site and it's isolated around a drainage way. It's not really, you know, immediately adjacent to, you know, future industrial buildings in the sense that there's this natural buffer or drainage way or natural feature that kind of separates it. Then I think you start looking at site specifics and then you try to balance it all. And I think when you balance it all out with the grade change and the feasibility factors, this seems to make sense to me.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Thank you, Larry. Are there any opponents wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so we spent, you know, a good amount of time on this site in the pre-meeting. So, yeah, Larry did summarize, you know, what the concept element of the master plan, what it lays out as a requirement whenever there's a proposal to amend the future land use map. So, obviously, their application touched on the need for affordable housing and housing in general, which of course, we talk about that on a monthly basis. So, you're well aware of the city acknowledging the need for more housing throughout the city and throughout the jurisdiction. So, absolutely, that is a necessary component, but we also talked about the need in preserving industrial ground and there's not a lot of industrial ground that is undeveloped and designated in the master plan. So, the city has always been cognizant and cautious to lose any of that potential industrial ground. So, well, yes, there is slope on the site. We, you know, it may not be prime industrial ground, but, you know, we believe that there could be smaller industrial flex buildings that provide small industrial users with space would be one idea. You know, along with that, I think it's important to recognize, you know, the existing industrial users that exist on the northwest, the east and the southeast of this site. You know, a change to residential would have an impact on some of the regulations that they would need to abide by. Those would include increased buffer yards as well as a decrease and as we just came off talking about it, the allowed noise and sound requirement. So, there could be a negative impact just on those surrounding properties if this site were to be developed or redesignated for industrial use. You know, the other one, we didn't, we talked about, there's a 36-acre adjacent undeveloped parcel also to the north and northwest. The city believes that that would likely need to change its designation to residential if this site were to go as well. So, then you have, you're losing additional acres, so you're not having that industrial traffic driving through a residential development to get to the highway and vice versa with the street, the next arterial to the north. So, those are the three primary reasons of why the city believes that the designation should remain industrial. There have been several pre-application meetings and conversations with potential developers that have shown interest for residential on this site and the city said that we would not be supportive of changing from industrial to residential. So, I guess that's where staff would leave it. There was a nice rendering that Larry showed with a lot of trees that I don't currently see on the elevation, so a nice touch there, but just teasing. So, can I answer any questions or, you know, additional thought if you have any?
Eric, I have a question. Would this have to stub to the north property that you alluded to?
Yes, there will be a requirement of a through street that goes from Blair High Road. Sorry, I'm just zooming out here. Take off my contours. Yeah, so there would be a connection from Ida Street to Blair High Road through that next undeveloped parcel to the north northwest of the site.
And can you expand or repeat again the setback requirements and the negative impact on future industrial development that could occur up north?
Yeah, so many of the properties are zone GI. You know, obviously, this parcel and the other adjacent undeveloped parcel have DR zoning. But if these properties were to develop industrial, there's not a buffer yard between those existing industrial users with any potential industrial development on this site. If there were to be, you know, this site, if it was zoned residentially, I can pull it up really quick just so I'm accurate here, there's going to be an increase or a requirement now for the buffer yard. So, from GI, if it was a low-density product, it'd be as high as 60-foot of landscape buffer yard if it was a R7 requires a 50-foot buffer yard.
As opposed to zero?
As opposed to zero. So, any future, you know, redevelopment or improvements on those industrial sites, if this were to be R7, let's say, then you have a 50-foot landscape buffer yard that could come into play and, you know, I don't know what type of improvements, but those are just examples of potential negative impacts that you could see. And then, of course, you know, you do have a decrease in the decibels, you know, at the receiving property, once it's a lower zoning designation. If it was GI, it'd be a higher threshold for the adjacent for decibels. And, you know, I don't know all the users surrounding it, but those are a couple of potential negative impacts.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I'm sensitive to affecting the marketability and, you know, development potential of something to the north. The reason I ask is that, you know, I'm looking at this from a real estate perspective and given my experience. You know, we've seen industrial sites have to comply with setbacks in the past and I feel like that's not an uncommon ask for industrial sites anyway. I also can't help but think that the affordable housing demand might supersede the need for industrial at this very location. I think if this was a little bit more north, I would probably be in more in agreement with the recommendation, but I tend to think honestly that it's a better use, what's being proposed. And that's just me coming from the market perspective, also seeing how long it's been marketed and compared to other properties in the area. But that's just me kind of wearing my real estate hat and I just thought it was noteworthy, I guess, wanted to make that clear.
Larry, you looked like you wanted to say something, so I'm going to call you back up. You can.
It's kind of a statement, but also kind of a question.
Enter your name and address, Kim, please.
Sure. Let me turn this back. So, I mean, this is showing the proposed site plan with the 260 units here. Oh, sorry, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. You have this sort of natural drainage way, this natural buffer. It seems to me that, you know, the setbacks of any adjacent industrial use could almost use this beneficial buffer of the drainage way. It seems to me that you could maybe go to the zoning board of appeals potentially and get a waiver of some of those setbacks because of the beneficial buffer. We've used the beneficial buffer, you know, position or argument in the past that, you know, the setbacks under that particular zoning is sort of overkill because you have this intervening natural feature, if you will, that protects the multifamily from any heavier industrial use. They still may be able to comply with whatever the buffer is, but they also may be able to get a waiver depending on, you know, what the use is, it seems to me. So, we're sort of speculating as to what might go up here, but the fact that you've got this pretty significant drainage way, it seems to me that we have a pretty decent buffer between the adjacent users. So, just want to point that out.
One quick question for you before you.
Sure.
So, affordable housing. Give us your definition of affordable housing. What are the likely rents going to be on these units?
You know, I'm not an expert in the light tech area, but what my understanding is it's, was it 60% of the adjusted average median income or something like that?
Well, yeah, there's a definition for what qualifies, but I'm just curious.
Right.
Affordable housing, I want to make sure it's going to be affordable.
Yeah, it is. Well, it is, but in my understanding, it has to meet all the federal laws regarding the low-income housing tax credit projects. My understanding is, in Omaha, Nebraska, with the incomes the way they are, the, for the market rate rents are not significantly higher than the affordable housing rents. But I think there's two different programs, if I'm not mistaken. One is, you know, adjusted even lower for the average income, but again, I'm not, that's kind of outside of what I do. The person from Elmington Capital can answer those questions better than I can, but.
So, this will be a tax credit.
This is a tax credit project. That's what they do.
Okay. Thanks.
I guess real quick, while Larry has that exhibit up there, you know, it's one thing, yes, you do have industrial users on the opposite side of the creek, but under the word Shimmer there is a large industrial user. So, you know, I want to make sure that's also.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably a fair representation there that's showing the aerial with the subject site with the adjacent site there.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I think I closed the public hearing. No, I did now.
Real quick, actually, Larry, if you could, come up. I did that on purpose so you could say. Just kidding. If your application were successful, what happens if your client doesn't receive light tech funding from the state? In that scenario, we've changed the master plan to industrial, just throwing it out there as a question. I mean, obviously, light tech funds are competitive.
True. I, you know, I don't, my client couldn't make it here today, so I'm not exactly sure, but, yeah, you'd now have an amendment to the future land use map. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem. Is there a way to have a reverter that it would, if it's not an affordable housing tax credit project, that it would revert back to the industrial master plan and that no one else could come in and do a market rate rent deal here? I mean, if you could do that, I think my people would be okay with that. I can't speak for them because they're not here, but I understand what you're saying. And because if the whole idea is we're balancing the preservation of industrial versus providing affordable housing and then all of a sudden that component goes away, I understand, you know, the concern that all of a sudden we've changed the future land use map and we're not getting what we said we were going to get. So, I mean, if there is a way to do that and that's acceptable to my client, and if it's not, then maybe this doesn't go forward. But if it goes forward the way it is now and the amendment is approved with that condition that it has to have some affordable housing component to it, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't go forward as far as building permits. I don't know if that is something that's possible or not. I don't know if that is something that's possible or not. We've done that through development agreements before where we put kind of additional restrictions on zoning. So maybe it could be through a development agreement of some sort where they agree that if it's not affordable housing in nature or a tax credit project, that they understand that they can't go get a building permit for a market rate rent and no one else can either. And you record that against the property and it becomes binding. That's an idea.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Dispose of the question.
I actually had a.
No, I closed the public hearing, sir.
Okay, you closed the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have a recommendation?
The city recommends denial.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions, comments? Entertained a motion? Or not?
A motion to deny.
Do I have a second? I have a second, okay. Motion, a second to deny. Kathy, can you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Sotolongo? Moore? Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Denial approved, five to one.
Great, thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay. Next, we're going to take items number seven, eleven, and seventeen together. Number seven is case C three dash twenty-five dash zero five five. Applicant is In singer Engineering. Their request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from industrial to high-density residential. The location is southwest of Thirty-Fourth and Vinton. Case number, or number eleven, agenda item number eleven is case number C ten dash twenty-five dash zero fifty-two. The request is a preliminary plat approval of Vinton Silos addition of subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from GI to R seven. Same location at Thirty-Fourth, southwest of Thirty-Fourth and Vinton Streets. And agenda item seventeen is case number C eleven dash twenty-five dash zero five four. Applicant is In singer Engineering. Their request is approval of a PUR, planned unit redevelopment overlay district, and the location is still their southwest Thirty-Fourth and Vinton Streets. Is the applicant here? Pardon?
Yeah, I have number eleven, so.
Seven, you can, we're going to let the applicant, I don't know if you're an opponent or proponent or an opponent. So we're going to let the applicant and proponents talk first, okay?
Justin In singer, one six nine three four Brown Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one six. I'm here on behalf of the development team and civil engineer on the project. We're just excited to be able to take an old, underutilized industrial site in the neighborhood and turn it into something that's better for the community and activate the trail there that's along the silos. Here for any, to answer any questions that you guys may have and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Are there any other proponents who wish to speak?
Good afternoon, my name is Patrick Mason, one one five zero six Nicholas Street, Suite two hundred. I'm a part of the ownership and development team and just here really to address any questions or concerns from the board or anyone else that's here. We've spent now, it is close to three years getting to this point, which we don't take as a small hurdle by any means. But really just asking for your consideration and what we, we still have quite a bit of work to do going forward. But nothing but, as Justin said, pretty solid intentions here to really activate something that's long underutilized, has proven to be a property that quite frankly causes problems and poses risks to the public at times. We've nursed that to the best of our ability over the last three years while also spending quite a bit of money. So we're really excited to be here and continue to move forward in the process.
Patrick, have you met with the neighbors?
Not in formal factor, no. We intend to do so during the TIF process. There's kind of some abnormalities to this, not abnormalities, but in order to get to this point, we did have to go through the CRA and EBA process, which did call for a neighborhood meeting. And we, actually, because of the way it went, there were two notifications of a neighborhood meeting. The first one was canceled because the census data had changed, so the study had to be really re-engaged and looked at all over again. And then, once we did receive the recommendation for EBA status, we had to host a meeting, a neighborhood meeting again, and not a single person showed up. That was hosted, would have been the end of two thousand twenty-three, and we held it on Thirty-second and Vinton, right in the guts of the neighborhood, so. But we intend to do so further in the TIP process, yeah. I got to give both Roger Garcia and Ron Hug have been really big proponents of the project. And we've worked really hard to communicate directly with them to also be sensitive right now because everything you've seen on paper to date is by definition conceptual in terms of architecture. So with approvals today, we'll move further into design, in which case we believe it's very important to engage the neighborhood, make sure they understand how everything's going to flow in and out of the site. But as you can understand, getting to today, just understand figuring out demolition, again, making sure that the EBA designation was in place, which we are grateful for. It's a tall climb, but we've tried to be transparent, but also sensitive to the fact of not putting something out there that with the amount of hurdles in place, quite frankly, can't happen if we're not to this point. So, again, careful of putting things out there that may not come to fruition, but obviously becoming a little more real now. So we'll ramp up the communication.
Assuming we go forward today with the positive votes on these items here, what's the likelihood? You've been working on it for three years. Are you convinced that you're going to move forward with it?
We are, yes.
Assuming you get all the approvals that you need?
Yes, we are.
Okay. It's a very unique development, to say the least, right?
Yes.
You know, anybody that drives by the interstate sees those silos every day. I'm curious why you're keeping the silos?
Part of what you just said, I mean, they are iconic and to us, they do have historical value. There's nothing monetary that we can leverage in that sense, but they've been a part of the fabric of our city as long as the interstate's really kind of been flowing the traffic there that it has. So we also have talked enough with members of the neighborhood and just people in the city that they do matter. They provide jobs. The railroad grain in essence has been a part of our city and our state for as long as we've been around. So there is some nostalgia there, but also it is a balancing act in terms of the demolition, noise control. We also have spent a lot of time with NDOT. That's part of what's taken this so long is really understanding what NDOT's intentions are with the interstate in the long run. So that played into our decision-making of leaving that bin, the set of bins on the south side of the interstate, is we would be triggering so many things with the state, or excuse me, with the state and the federal government that they're just not prepared to dive into right now. So for us, it's a sound barrier. And again, really, in the grand scheme of things, there's a lot of nostalgia to them. So we're pretty excited to keep them around, quite frankly. And they've done, the bins to the south on the other side of the interstate, they've done some artwork on them. So we're intentional in trying to do the same in the long run, costs money, obviously, but we really want to make sure that we maintain the history in an appropriate way.
Are these market rate apartments?
They are, yes.
Okay.
We're not in a qualified census tract, so our ability to go after light tax is not there.
Okay. And how many units are we talking about?
Right now, we're about two hundred and thirty-five, and that is a mixture of all the way from studios up to a couple of three bedrooms. But we plan to feed in large part off of the density that's already been there for, quite frankly, as long as the neighborhood's been around. It's been pretty dense there. And so, yeah, the med center obviously does nothing but continue to grow. But we also gathered the feedback that there is an intention for a lot of people that are in kind of the heart of those more commercialized areas to be in a more neighborhood-friendly area, which the trail provides such great connectivity to the med center. Even with the bike lanes, you can get all the way downtown going on Vinton Street. So our goal is really to maximize, I mean, you go to big cities and sites like this where you have the trails, you have the bus system, you have the connectivity to these, really the guts of urban Omaha. It's really a diamond in the rough, it's just got a pretty big hurdle with the demolition. So, but fortunately, we've spent, even from when we met with, we did our pre-op meeting technically before we even closed on the properties. And the intention in doing that was early engagement, but we did the same thing with demolition. So we've been studying the demolition of these for literally three years. And we'll be very vocal with everybody as to how that's going to happen. But again, it doesn't happen overnight. We really have had to spend a lot of time, money, and engineering to get to where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, is the, so for the building component that would be over, I'll call it, I don't know, one story of silo, is that the intention for foundation purposes or aesthetics or?
It's multiple things. So once you go to the substructures in terms of demolition, you almost run the risk of doubling your demolition cost. So if we're to go down and fully, and I could show you pictures, it's pretty fascinating, the insides of these things. But there are so many walls and so much steel that, and it all goes about twenty to thirty feet below grade. So for those that, I'm sure you all know the site, but trail, we kind of look at it two ways. You've got trail grade and you've got our sites grade. And so we want to give our development and the people living there the ability to still let it feel like it's its own area, but then letting the trail also be its own and then blending them together. So that about fifteen feet or so will serve as a retaining wall for the site, but it also is allowing our development to kind of be there, at least have its own area that's slightly above the trail.
The silos are completely empty, right? And then there's nothing in the silos?
Well, yes, yeah, they've been, I mean, they've been abandoned and there's not been anything in there for years. But there's old steel, there's tons of concrete, obviously. Right now, there's about ten feet of ice, so if you walked into them, you'd be walking, you can walk the entire stretch of those and you're walking on solid ice. So there, I can't speak to how, as much as we try to keep people out, they are incredibly dangerous to have been sitting there as long as they have.
So is there a possibility that people and rodents and other outside stuff can get into these silos?
Oh, it's been, I mean, there's thirty years worth of people.
Are you going to try and contain that somehow?
Oh, yes, absolutely, and we have already. It's very difficult, but yes, in terms of part of construction, we'll be ensuring that nobody can go into those spaces whatsoever, which we already do in terms of managing the property. But yes, they're not going to be habitable by people. That's not our goal.
Well, that I can understand, but if there's openings in the silos where rodents can get in, I mean, then it becomes maybe a sanitation issue with rodents around the area.
Understood.
Right.
I mean, it's, I would say the same to any other vacant building that's sitting around the area, but we, our goal will be to fully remediate anything.
Depends on what's in these things, though, too.
Yeah.
That draws the rodents to those things.
Again, our goal will be to fully empty everything out, absolutely.
All right, any other proponents?
Lucas Stone, three seven two seven North one hundred and eighth Street. Looking at the concept, I think it's wonderful. Much needed new homes in a way that I think really respects the history of the site. A little whimsy, it's nice, some decent, some halfway decent details, some good historic reuse. I think this is the kind of project we like to see in this city. The kind of thing where we've got, where creativity as, where creativity wins out over the, over just the dumb, bulldozes everything and plops something generic on.
Thank you. Any other proponents? CNN, are there any opponents? Are you proponent or opponent? Are you for or against the project? Come on up, come on up. And just go ahead and name your, put your name and address in for the record, please.
Paul Sorato, thirty-five oh eight Haskell Street. I came because, this is the first time I've been to a planning board agenda meeting. I came because I got the letter saying that this meeting was to present the details of the request. And I, that's what I was interested in. And actually, the gentleman, they were talking about a lot of those things. By the way, those two meetings you had, I would have attended one of them, I was probably working and I probably couldn't come. That's why I didn't show up. But, yeah, I'm just interested in more details before I would approve or disapprove of how this is all going to come about. And I mean, okay, so the, I'm still a little unclear how these silos are going to be destroyed, imploded, I don't know, whatever's going to happen with them and how that's going to affect us in the immediate area, the residents in the immediate area. Which brings up another interesting point to me as a resident of the area. It's been designated as a blighted area, and I don't understand how that appellation blighted was applied to the area. It's a working-class, middle-class neighborhood in which all the property owners do a fine job of maintaining their property. So I don't know by definition how it's been designated blighted. I don't understand that. That's been on my mind, and I wanted to air that and bring that up because apparently that plays into the proposed project. I don't know. Several things about this I don't know. But I live across the street on Thirty-Fifth and Haskell, as you can probably tell from my address, across the street from the trail and across the street from the silos. So, yeah, I just, I'm not here to approve or disapprove, if that's what the point was here. At this point, I'm not ready to approve or disapprove unless I have, unless we have a meeting and I have more information. My own opinion, I mean, nobody else is here from the neighborhood, obviously, but for my own sake, in my own opinion, as a property owner, I would like to have a lot more questions answered. And I don't know if that's what we're doing here today, but anyway, that's what brought me here.
I think they'll have a meeting with you at some point in the future, is what Patrick had indicated. So Patrick and, or Jeff, do you want to come up and maybe just address any of those concerns or? You're good. Sir, are you done? Paul, were you finished? I didn't mean to cut you off, are you finished?
I guess, I guess that's what I had on my mind.
Okay. Thanks. Do you want to?
Patrick Mason.
May I ensure that you're going to have the future meetings to discuss more of the details?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, fully on record, that's the one hundred percent intention. So full transparency will be in place, both about the demolition process, the timing of construction, the design. We will still, there's still so much design to be done that we do intend to field input. So, again, we fundamentally believe that the use of the site right now versus what we're planning to do are night and day differences in terms of benefiting the neighborhood. So we will be fully transparent with you.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to add one thing. Yep, Justin In singer, one six nine three four Brown Street. We did also reach out to the Neighborhood Association, and the president of the Neighborhood Association said he would send out information to all the residents. So that was another piece of coordination that Patrick didn't mention before. And then also the, we did go through, the CRA study is one of the things that took up that three years. It took a year to get it, to do that whole study from start to finish. So that was one of the, one of the three years that it, that time went by, so.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, are there any other opponents that wish to speak? CNN, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, we have three different agenda items. We have future land use amendment, we have a preliminary plat, and then a PUR. The applicant had mentioned that perhaps, you know, there could be some changes just as it relates to the PUR. If there are substantial changes to the site, you know, that could always be modified when the final plat comes back to planning board. So just keep us apprised of any substantial changes to the site or to the proposed development. The neighbor had mentioned the term blighted. That is a, is a term unfortunately that state of Nebraska uses when it comes to qualifying potential projects for tax increment financing, among other things, not to get into the details, because Mr. Don Seaton could definitely do that much better than I can. But it doesn't have any, you know, negative connotation on your property or the neighborhood. It's a term, but there are qualifications as far as, you know, several, five different criteria when it, when it is looked at being a qualifying for a CRA. So I don't think I need to get into too many of the details. Obviously, with the future land use amendment, completely different scenario than the last case. You know, with this industrial almost entirely surrounded by residential, except for a small existing industrial site to the. for a small existing industrial site to the north. Regarding the plat component, plating into one lot, there will be the need for a traffic memo and analysis, so the applicant will need to continue to coordinate those requirements with Public Works Department. You know, one of the great benefits of this is Thirty-fourth Street on the east side of the project will be, will go from a very poor state right now and right away to, to a brand-new paved street, so that'll be a great benefit for those property owners on the east. And then number seventeen is the P U R, and this gets into some of the details. And I guess one of the most important components and, you know, i- is the streetscaping and getting the dedication of right-of-way, so there is a little bit of crossover there with the plat as well, but I think that's one of the most important components at this time to, to get right. And as I mentioned, you know, if there are changes that are necessary, we can incorporate those into a future approval of the final plat. So unless there's any specific questions from the board, I would recommend the different agenda items one by one. So for number seven, the future land use amendment staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions? If not.
Hey, before you guys, I'm going to voice from above here. Sometimes I have a hard time.
Yeah.
Getting your attention. So I didn't catch the gentleman's name who came up and wanted to know about CRAs and blighted, but Don Seaton is. Paul, Walt? Nope, you're good. Paul, all right, Paul. See the guy in the glasses right there? He's going to fill you in, he's going to give you his contact. He's, he's going to give you his contact information if you have questions about the CRA and the blighted for your neighborhood. You're welcome. And Mike, to answer your questions, we have, I have had conversations with Councilman Hug about the openness of the silos. There have been reports of kids, go imagine that, getting into the silos. So we have tried to work the best we can with the complaints that we receive on making sure that the site is as secure as it can to keep people and curious teens from going onto the site. It's an ongoing effort. I haven't heard anything for a while, but I did hear of that in the past.
I imagine it's a little dangerous, too.
It is. So, just so you know.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have a recommendation for approval. Do I have a motion?
To approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Kathy, can you record the vote, please?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay, thank you.
For agenda item eleven, staff recommends approval of a rezoning from G I to R seven, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from G I to R seven and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Kathy, can you record the vote, please?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
For number seventeen, staff recommends approval of the P U R overlay district subject to submitting acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the P R, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, subject to submitting acceptable final P U R development plans prior to forwarding to the requested City Council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, can you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Great, thank you. Good luck. Interesting project. Thank you all. Thanks.
Good luck, definitely. Yeah.
Okay, one last item on the agenda now. Don, the chat's here. Yeah, item number eight, C three, case C three twenty-five dash twenty-five dash zero-five-seven. Applicants to Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Their request is approval of the two thousand, two twenty-two fourteen Florence Boulevard Revitalization TIF redevelopment plan. Location is twenty-two fourteen Florence Boulevard. Don, please.
Hi, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. This is a residential redevelopment in North Omaha involving a rehab of a long vacant, deteriorated, historic, row home building, be fully rehabilitated into twelve apartment units. Developer is Brian Nix. It's a one-point-three-million-dollar TIF project, or total investment in the neighborhood. The TIF request is two-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-ten dollars. It's a good project, helps the area, and we ask for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Are there any other proponents?
I'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Good morning, Ryan Dearing, twelve-oh-four Ingberg Road. We are the representative, we are the, the construction company that is asking and requesting this TIF to get this through. I just wanted to let you know that we are doing everything we can to bring this back up to better than it was. That's what we normally do in our construction company. We take a lot of properties, fourplexes on up, and we make them better than they ever were, livable, profitable. They will not be expensive. Everything is going to be affordable, especially in this, in this neighborhood, where everything is going to be designed so it can be done at a twelve for a one-bedroom, at least at twelve-hundred or less a month. And we're trying to get them so everything is, is affordable and filled up real fast. There's twelve units in it. And we've had engineers look at the building, we've had City of Omaha look at the building for us, to make sure that we are in compliance with all the codes. And we are moving forward now after all that has gone through, and we just want to get started on it.
So are these all two-bedrooms, sir? All two-bedroom units?
No, there's going to be two efficiencies.
Okay.
And there's going to be four two-bedrooms, and the rest of them are one-bedrooms.
Got it. Thanks. Any other proponents?
Lucas Thode, three-seven-two-seven North one-hundred-and-eighth Street. And I'd like to say, this is exactly the kind of project that TIF was made for. Small bets, a small bet on a down, a neighborhood that's down on its luck and could use, use the helping hand. We want to see more TIF like this.
Thank you, thank you. I don't think there's any other proponents. I don't see anybody in the room. Any opponents? Okay, CNN, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, the rezoning came before the planning board last month. There's also a zoning board of appeals application for the parking area in the back where that will be coming forward. So, yeah, it'd be great to get this back online, and staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion and a second. Kathy, can you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you. And they now entertain a motion that completes our agenda items, need a motion to approve the minutes from the February fifth minute, meeting minutes and pre-meeting minutes from February fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve minutes from the February meeting and the pre-meeting.